Mike, Michael.
Michael.
All right. I call this meeting to order. September eighth, twenty twenty-five, city council meeting, and announce that we have a quorum. Thank you for standing already. Our invocation is going to be led by Pastor David Lorenz of First Baptist Church, and if you'll remain standing after he prays for us, we'll say the pledges.
Okay.
Will you bow with me, please? Heavenly Father, we're grateful that this is the day that you've made, and that we're going to rejoice in it, that we have life and breath, and we get to experience this wonderful city that we live in. And so, we're grateful that we get to call Friendswood home. And today, as our council meets, discusses important business of our city, we do ask that you would give them guidance, you would give them confidence in their decision-making, that they would have the best interest of our citizens at hand, Lord. We're grateful for all of our city leaders, our first responders, our police and fire EMS, and we're grateful for the citizens of our community. And we ask that as we, as citizens, would honor our leaders, and that we would show love and respect to one another as we live out what you call us to do, to be a blessing to one another. And we ask all this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item four, council comments and reports.
I'll start.
Councilmember Branson.
This, I'm so sorry, my voice is going. I didn't yell at anybody today, I promise. This past Saturday, the Historical Society, KFB, Rotary, Friends of Downtown Friendswood, along with the help of the High School Honor Society Group, put on an ice cream social. It was supposed to have been on Labor Day, which is why we call it the Labor Day Ice Cream Social, but we got rained out, and Farmer's Market very kindly allowed us to pop up a tent. But I can tell y'all that without the city's help, it would not have happened, because they popped up our tent. Blue Bell let us keep their freezer all week long, and then Parks helped us move that freezer from Friends Church over to the park and back again. And we had tons of great volunteers, and I just want to say thank you to everybody who helped, Communications Department, Parks and Rec, and then all of our volunteer servers. It was a great success, and it was kind of cute, because towards the end, I think a swim team must have finished up on Saturday, and all of a sudden, there was this long line of kiddos in bathing suits waiting for their ice cream. But it was a great event, and I just want to thank all who were involved. It was a quick turnaround, less than a week, and we pulled it off, and we're very grateful everyone's support, so thank you.
I just want to complain I didn't get notice that it was reset. I'm kidding. No further comment.
Well, it wasn't raining when I got there, but I was disappointed that it had been canceled. There was one brief thing. At the Activity Center, if you want to get in your Christmas shopping a little bit early, or start your Christmas shopping a little bit early, they are having Christmas in September, I think it's September the eighteenth. And Friday and Saturday. Friday and Saturday. Go over there and start your Christmas shopping there at the Activity Center.
Well, last Saturday as well, in Stevenson Park. And as an aside, I will say, when we have Farmer's Market, we had the Ice Cream Social, and we had the Second Annual Pause to Protect, which is a group of folks that got together and handed out and provided free vaccines for pets in Friendswood. They did mic-free micro-tripping as well. That was heavily supported by Friendswood Animal Control, and I want to make sure I get the name right, Friendswood Animal Needs and Solution. So, FANS. It's a nonprofit group here in Friendswood, and I wanted to shout out to them, and it was a great event. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on. Item five, public comment. To comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the city council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer an item to city management for further action or direct staff to place an item on a future agenda during public comment. Public shall comply with the rules of decorum. Paige Bailey.
Howdy, y'all. I'm Paige Bailey, the Executive Director of Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. I'm here to read a statement today that was written. The Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District was created by the Texas Water Code with a clear obligation to serve and protect waterways, creeks, tributaries, and ditches within its boundaries. For decade, for decades, Friendswood's Clear Creek watershed residents have carried forth financial burden. Their tax dollars built easements, rights of ways, and detention on the Dickinson Bayou side long before it's been developed. They sacrificed while still facing floods, knowing the district must serve the entire area. Now, as Lake City's Dickinson Bayou side is finally developing, their investment is set to pay off. The new tax revenue will strengthen the entire district, including Friendswood, bringing the return on decades of sacrifice, providing protection for lives and property across both watersheds. To try and dismantle the GCCDD now is legally absurd, almost impossible, a waste of time, and a disservice to the citizens who voted for us to exist and to serve them. And it's pushed aside by a few bad apples and political leaders trying to regain lost power. It would disenfranchise Friendswood taxpayers who built and funded the system for generations. The GCCDD will not abandon its duty. It will continue to protect every resident, every business, and every watershed in its jurisdiction, as it always has. Thank you.
Item six, committees or special reports. Six A received the Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation annual report. This report has been, is attached to our agenda for council review, no in-person report. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll consider the report received and move to the next item. Six B received the Friendswood Property Tax and Court Collection Report. Friendswood Property Tax and Collection Report was attached to the agenda for council review, no in-person report. Any comments or questions on this? I would like to comment that it's amazing, the collection rate that we see in the city of Friendswood on our property taxes. It's really well out, out ahead of surrounding cities, and, you know, we are just blessed with good taxpayers here, pay their money on time.
And it's historical. It's happened year after year.
Yeah.
No further comments. We'll consider the report received and move to the next item. Item seven, work session topics. Receive and discuss the Engineering Department's Quarterly Drainage Report, presented by graduate engineer, Marra Blackburn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Marra Blackburn. I'll be giving you, I'm a graduate engineer for the city of Friendswood. I'll be giving you the drainage quarterly update. Please feel free to ask any questions throughout my presentation. Our first project is the utility relocate at Clear Creek, located at the Poly Ranch subdivision and north of the Black Hawk wastewater treatment plant. This project aims to increase the resiliency of the city's water and sewer lines during future storms. By relocating these lines underground, we can permanently protect them from impacts, debris, stormwater, and erosion. Clearing and grubbing on the Harris County side is ongoing and has been completed on the Galveston side, Galveston County side. Pipe fusion will be commencing soon, at which, at which time, the pilot bore and boring operations will begin. Next is the Deepwood Flood Control Project, located on Deepwood Drive, next to the old Public Works Building. This project is a mitigation project to decrease flood risk within the watershed by removing trees and brush from within floodway of Clear Creek. The recent rains have been helping get grass established at this property. We will be closing out this project in the, in the coming weeks. Next project is the Friendswood Regional Stormwater Detention Basin Project, located on FM nineteen fifty-nine at Blackhawk Boulevard. The purpose of this project is to reduce flood, flood risk in major flood events by constructing an offline detention basin. Moving forward, a dry bottom detention basin option has been recommended by the project engineer. This approach is beneficial for several key reasons. First, it avoids impacts to both wetlands and known archaeological areas, which significantly reduces regulatory and environmental concerns. Second, it provides a substantial detention capacity over seven hundred acre feet, which will help manage stormwater effectively and reduce downstream flooding risks. As of today, the rough grading project has been completed. The rough grading project was a phase of the overall project that was used to obligate Galveston County's ARPA funds. It provides about two hundred and fifty acre feet of detention. Final design is anticipated for late twenty twenty-five to early twenty twenty-six. The following project is the Friendswood City Detention Ponds, City Center Detention Ponds, located on FM five twenty-eight and Blackhawk Boulevard within Ters One. This project is a component of the new city center development and is designated to support flood mitigation efforts as part of the WICOM Property Flood Control Project. Excavation for both detention ponds have been completed. As of last week, grass has been planted on Pond Number Two, which is south of Brookside Intermediate, shown in red. An as-built survey will be conducted to be used by the WICOM Flood Control Project. However, the builder is waiting on approval of outfall and bridge plans, so they can be built, at which time, the survey will be completed to provide information for our WICOM project, in which I will be discussing next.
Was it, I'm sorry, Beth, go ahead. Was it determined that we needed any additional mitigation in Pond, in, in Pond Two? Or have we not determined that yet? Because I saw here that it was completed.
It is completed, and the totality of that mitigation will be quantified with the as-built drawings, at which time, then we can apply those credits to the terracing that's going to take place shortly after that.
Right, but we didn't have to do any additional on Pond Two?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
So, the bridge plans are for Blackhawk Boulevard to go across that outfall at the back of the property. Am I correct?
Correct. It's going over, there's a Harris County Flood Control District right of way that's approximately two hundred feet long, that's perpendicular to Blackhawk and FM five twenty-eight. So, that bridge structure is basically a glorified culvert will be over that area.
WICOM terracing, our next project is WICOM terracing and stormwater detention basin project, located adjacent to City Center Detention Basin. The purpose of this project is to increase, increase conveyance within Clear Creek. A topographical survey of the area highlighted is, in green, is ongoing. The H&amp;H model is being developed. The second monthly meeting with H, with Harris County Flood Control District, and the engineer has been held. Second monthly meeting with engineer has been held. As for upcoming activities, an archaeological survey will be come, will be done to identify any potential sensitive cultural areas. A well-end determination will also be carried out to finalize site constraints. Geotechnical borings are planned to begin soon. These are pending approval of a bird survey to comply with environmental regulations.
To actually perform this work, this terracing work, to get that accomplished, we needed to complete the detention basins first. Is that correct? They're going to be used for detention of the water?
Correct. To add to this project, you may recall, this was a funding that's done both between our drainage bonds from twenty nineteen, plus ten million from the state of Texas. We found out recently that the state's looking to fund an additional ten million dollars towards this effort, that we're contemplating utilizing this for this, as well as the Blackhawk project that's just on the other side of Clear Creek, still in the Harris County side of Friendswood, next to our wastewater treatment plant. So, we're tickled pink that there's that much attention in this region. We're working with our partners in Lake City, Harris County Flood Control District, Galveston County, as well as the Drainage District to make that happen.
My question here is, if H&amp;H modeling is going to start, how can we be certain that with the terracing project, we have enough mitigation with the two detention ponds?
So, the ponds will be plugged into that H&amp;H modeling, and the terracing will be scoped sufficient to have a no-net impact downstream and upstream. So, if we need to scale back the terracing so that there's not an increase in water surface elevation during extreme events to Lake City, then they'll...
Or increase the ponds to make sure we get the mitigation? Because I'd rather, I'd rather do more terracing and have more mitigation than cut down on terracing.
We may have to do some more mitigation on the other side of, on the Blackhawk property that I was referencing earlier on Bay Area. Simply put, the, the parameters of these ponds are pretty well set, both due to their elevation and their surface area, since they're in the floodway.
Bring in the Blackhawk, Autumn Lake.
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha.
Sorry, Marra.
It's okay. Finally, we have the comprehensive master drainage plan. This project is a comprehensive plan for urban and riverine flood mitigation that will identify and prioritize projects aimed at reducing flooding and providing benefits to the Friendswood community. Our public engagement meeting was held on August nineteenth, and the preparation, the participation was outstanding. We had well over sixty people in attendance. And finally, I wanted to share that modeling is well underway. The project team has a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, where we will review all the data that has been collected, as well as review of existing conditions. This concludes my presentation. Please feel free to share any questions or concerns.
Mayor. Yeah, thank you. I just know I could go next, or if you wanted to. So, Mo, this is a total of how many different projects?
This is six projects that we're providing updates. Obviously, there's other projects that are in various stages of development.
And so, we have, have we exhausted or...
Spent.
Yeah. I'm not exhausted, but have we spent or allocated the forty-two million dollars that we have had a bond issue for and said we would spend on flooding?
We, we have. We've exhausted that.
So, that forty-two million, plus twenty million from the state, plus ten million from the state. I know we haven't gotten the third ten million yet.
So, two, two ten million dollar contributions from the state.
Okay.
Thirteen.
There's sixty million.
Thirteen and a half million from Harris County Flood Control District for the nineteen fifty-nine project.
Seventy-three.
Plus eight and a half million dollars from Galveston County from their ARPA funds.
So, eighty-one and a half.
Plus three and a half million from Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District on the nineteen fifty-nine.
Eighty-four million.
Correct.
Has been spent on all these split projects in just the last how many years?
In the last six years. Well, we got authorization in twenty nineteen, so about five years, based upon the timeline.
The city of Friendswood has spent half of that.
Correct.
Okay, I'm proud of that. I'm proud that we've accomplished this much, and it should make a difference. I had the opportunity to go out and look at some of those things close up, and I'm not an expert, you know, in flood control or mitigation, but it's very impressive looking, and I trust the engineers and all the people that are involved. But that was a big commitment, forty-two million dollars, half of what's being spent by all, with all the different partners.
And it's a little less than half. I didn't count the TANOS commitment on the private side investing in that project, which is another seven million on top of that. So, it puts you right at ninety million dollars.
Maybe an additional ten million from the state.
Which was a point, yeah.
Less than half, but a significant portion, more than any other entity.
Correct.
Okay, I'm proud of that. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You have any questions? Great job, Marra. Thank you.
Thank you. I always forget to say this, but go Navy.
Go Navy.
She can make granny points with you.
Yeah.
What's that internship, it turned into a full-time job?
Quick, quick, Marra.
Where did you go to school, Marra?
College?
Yeah.
Lamar.
Lamar, okay. Navy doesn't play Lamar, so I guess we're safe.
But she was in the Navy.
Well, thank you for that, too. What'd you do in the Navy?
I was a CB.
CB, wow, Construction Battalion. What was your rate?
BU.
Builder. Wow, all right. Well, go Navy. All right, okay. Let me announce to you, sir. Seven B discussed the results of the city's Trash and Recycling Collection Services Survey and options moving forward, presented by City Manager Marad Kabiri.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, as you know, we've been dealing with garbage and collection services, at least issues, for the last several months. You may recall, shortly in February or March timeframe, we started getting a lot of complaints from folks that are on the Wednesday, Saturday pickup schedule. Namely, the Wednesday schedule has missed pickups, or they were late to get it, or they took an extra day or two to pick up, because the volume exceeded what capacity Waste Connections our current vendor was able to provide. So, we've been working with Waste Connections over the last several months to try to resolve that issue. Unfortunately, up until June, we weren't very successful in achieving a solution that met everybody's needs. So, at the request of city council and staff, we went out and did a citywide survey of every property owner, both residential and commercial. Over fourteen thousand, six hundred surveys were sent out to get some feedback on the community as to what they want if we were to go out and do a new RFP for those services. As you know, Friendswood takes its garbage and recycling services very seriously. We currently have twice-a-week garbage, once-a-week recycling, every-week heavy haul. So, anything you put at the curb, they take, as well as green waste. So, the survey was sent to, one correction, I say fourteen thousand, six hundred, was sent to fourteen thousand, three hundred and nine postcards were sent out to all property owners. On that postcard was a QR code for folks to scan and do a survey to give us their feedback on the services provided and what they would like to see moving forward. If anybody was technologically unable to do, use a QR code, we offered them the ability to call us or come into the office, and we'd fill out the survey for them in the city secretary's office. The online survey was tied to our GIS database, so we only got one unique response per property. So, Judge Ellisore couldn't fill three out for his house and then take up all the input for everybody else. In the survey, obviously, we looked at customer satisfaction, service use, usage, operational options that customers wanted, pricing, so on and so forth. So, of the fourteen thousand, three hundred and nine surveys that were sent out, seventeen hundred, nearly eighteen hundred responses were received, which is nearly thirteen, a little over thirteen percent response rate, which is statistically fantastic for a community of our size. There was a concern that maybe we only got responses from one or two particular areas in the community, but as you can see on the heat map on the right, the survey responses were pretty well spread out throughout the entire community. Even the Wednesday, Saturday area, looking at two councilmembers that live in that, or three, so. Actually, yeah, four councilmembers that live in that area. So, y'all dominate the Wednesday, Saturday service area. But we got quite a bit of comments back from folks in regard to the survey. Eight hundred and one comments, unique comments, were also submitted on top of the survey, so we got some, some information back that you couldn't necessarily qualit, have qualitative responses for or quantify in just your multiple-choice answers. So, here are the results. On the trash services, we had nearly eighty-two percent satisfied. If you look at somewhat satisfied, too satisfied, ninety-two percent of folks were somewhat satisfied or all the way, not extremely satisfied of their services. Availability of recycling services, two-thirds of folks were happy with the availability of recycling. Materials collected by recycling, same figure, two-thirds. Heavy trash pickup, ninety-two percent were satisfied or somewhat satisfied with that responsiveness of haulers when they complained about something. We're really at fifty percent, we're, forty-eight point one nine percent were satisfied. But if you add in the somewhat satisfied category, you're well over two-thirds there as well. And then, the cost of services, fifty percent satisfied, ten point five percent unsatisfied. Obviously, the somewhat satisfied can makes up the complement of that. So, what does that tell you? Obviously, a lot of folks are happy with their services they receive, but what do we do moving forward? So, we asked the survey respondents to prioritize what they thought was most important to them. So, in the screen before you, you have the order of priorities. First and foremost, they want twice-a-week trash pickup. They want curbside recycling offered, whether that's once a week or once a month, whatever the case may be. They don't want to go to a centralized location, drop off recycling. They want to be able to just put it at the curb and it be picked up. And then, everybody, the third priority was heavy trash pickup. So, if they put a sectional out on the curb, they want it picked up. There are even times when I've put out things that may have been in excess of their weight requirement, but as long as I was out there to help them to put it in their truck, they were okay with it, and we appreciated that service level provided by Waste Connections. The survey results, as it pertains to recycling, we did, again, a cross-section of the community to see what, what typically folks are looking to recycle, what type of materials. And as you can see, very important, eight hundred and thirty-four out of the thirteen hundred responses felt that recycling household items was very important to them. When we asked them, would they be willing to spend more? As you can imagine, that response came back, no, they would prefer not to spend more. Seventy percent said folks would not like to spend more money. I would ask you to put a pin in that one question, because we're going to come back to that here in a minute. And then, when we asked residents if they want to do a centralized recycling drop-off location, nearly two-thirds, more than two-thirds said no, they would prefer to do it at their curb, like they currently do. Heavy trash, similar to recycling, a lot of people found it extremely favorable and wanted to continue that service. We are one of the few communities that offers heavy trash every week, as opposed to once a month in some communities, or once a quarter in others, if at all offered. When we asked folks if they're willing to pay more for heavy trash pickup, like you can imagine, they said no. So, looking at the survey responses, we had unique comments in addition to the multiple-choice answers that folks were allowed to give. Total, eight hundred and one unique comments were given. Forty, forty-three percent roughly of those comments were positive. So, these are not essay statements, but short answers that folks fill out as to what comments they may be able to attribute beyond just the survey results. Negative comments were about twenty point eight five percent. We don't have to read these, but they're on the back of material if you would like to take a look at them. So, the next steps, and this is the guidance, the, the part where I need some feedback from city council. So, I mentioned earlier that we'd come back to the term of pricing. So, what predicated this discussion was that we were having issues with the Wednesday recycling services on the heels of us working on a contract extension with Waste Connections. You may recall, last December, we talked about doing a new contract extension for a three-year period that would include automated side-load trucks, because the, the cost of providing those services into the future were somewhat difficult. Anything that's heavy, labor-intensive, was finding harder and harder to retain employees to ride on the back of the trucks to do this work. Well, shortly after December, we got into the new year, and the tariffs that were discussed at the federal level were hitting, and Waste Connections felt that they would have a difficult time procuring new trucks with the automated service levels, or with the automated service capability. So, they said, hey, do you mind if we just continue our contract as, as is for another three-year period and see what the market does over the next three years? In exchange for that extension, they would maintain service levels like they have today, twice-a-week trash, once-a-week recycling, so on and so forth, with, I think, about a two-dollar increase per month, per, per account. And that's when we started hitting the Wednesday service issues. I am happy to say, in the last two months, month and a half, we haven't received any complaints on the Wednesday service levels. They've been able to tackle it far better than they had previously. So, the question before you guys, do you want to go out for a new RFP? We do run the risk, if we do an RFP, that cost of services may go up. So, we can specify, we want twice-a-week recycle, twice-a-week garbage, once-a-week recycling, once-a-week heavy haul, but we're going to be subject to whatever the market responds in those RFPs. We have the option, if y'all want, to pick up the discussion on the contract extension now that we have the survey results and feel fairly confident that the community appreciates the service as it's provided today. So looking for some feedback from y'all. Waste Connections District Manager Matt Lowe is here. If you have any specific questions for him and to their company, and we can go from there.
I'll kick it off by saying I'm very happy that the results came back, so really positive for Waste Connections. I've always been impressed by Waste Connections. I'm a Tuesday, Friday guy, so you know, I'm not in that problem day, but I always had good service from them. And for a two-dollar-a-month increase, I think we have a bird in the hand there that we should latch on to, because if we issue an RFP, we're going to be bound to the proposals that we get. Waste Connections would probably turn around and give us a proposal higher than the, just a two-dollar increase, because they know they'd be, you know, in a competition, but I think we should, my vote right now would be just stick with them, extend the contract, but happy to.
What sort of term are you considering, or are they offering to extend?
A three-year term, what we were discussing before we went out for the RFP, or before we went out for the survey.
Based on our surrounding neighbors and they use various different companies for their waste disposal, is there some concern, or is there any concern that some of the other competitors out there can provide the same level of hands-on service, you know, loading the twice-a-week service that we have, the recycling every week, the heavy, is there any concern that they could provide that kind of service?
So looking at our immediate neighbors, we're the lowest paid with the exception of, I want to say Alvin and Houston, and I'll come to them in a second. So Alvin only offers once-a-week trash, and so if they're cheaper than us, then it's the function of the frequency of service. And then Houston only charges forty dollars a year for their trash services, but they also go five or six weeks in terms of missed pickup. So if you were anticipating curbside recycling, you may have that can sitting out there for five or six weeks. They only offer once-a-month heavy haul, so on and so forth. Comparing apples to apples, our price and service level is far better than any of our neighbors. So we have gotten a little bit spoiled with Waste Connections, doing what they've done for Friendswood, for as long as they've done for Friendswood previously under the IESI and the Progressive name brand. So I am concerned if other agencies would be willing to provide that same level of service, and if they miss a pickup, they'll go back and pick it up when we contact them. Now, I do have a concern that it took so long to fix the Wednesday issue, because this is something that we felt should have been an easier fix. Wednesday represented the largest area of the city that has developed over the last several years, so the other areas of towns are pretty well saturated with new construction. Wednesday was our growing area. It was the West Ranch, the Eagle Lakes area, the Sun Meadow, the Friendswood Trails area, so on and so forth. So we do want to make sure that the solution that they put in to fix that is a sustainable fix.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I just want to first mention that I didn't know that comments were going to be posted, so I'm really glad I didn't go off, and I just, if anyone wants to look, I said I really like our service. I'm glad I didn't go crazy. So it was short and sweet. As far, I'm a Tuesday, Friday guy, myself too, but, and I love the service. And the biggest concerns that I was hearing from the people who were coming up and everything were the sizes of the trash cans that were going to be possibly presented to the residents if we went mechanical, and I know mechanical is coming. We all are seeing what AI and robotics can do, and the lifting of trash and that sort of thing with these mechanical arms and all that stuff is coming. But I'm really spoiled right now of the way that Waste Connections does it. There's often times that I have more than two very large trash cans out there. And I like our service, and I've had no problems with it at all. Two dollars more, we could go out for an RFP, I don't know what would come back, but I really am pleased with our service.
I am as well. I'm in Monday, Thursday, so it's we're all telling what our trash days are. And I comment, I heard, other than hearing council chambers, was people didn't want it to change. They liked the service, they wanted to continue, they didn't want to see any change. But I just wanted to verify, it's two dollars per month, it's for three years, and if that Wednesday problem shows up on any other day, including Wednesday, what will be our mechanism for getting that corrected if it evidences itself again?
So we can resolve all that during the negotiation process with Waste Connections, but by you vocalizing that comment is very valuable, so that Waste Connections hears it directly from you as well.
Thank you. So I'm a Wednesday person, and as you know, and Katina and others here, when I call and say it's seven o'clock Wednesday and no one's come in my neighborhood or in the surrounding neighborhoods, and they're out all night, the garbage is out all night until Thursday. It was not a sanitary thing. And it didn't just happen for a few months. It was really bad after Christmas, but it was an issue for at least a year. And I know that you worked on it, Mo, to try to voice that. I know others worked on it, and they did come. If it was just my neighborhood or a few streets, they would come late at night and pick it up, or they would be there on Thursday, you know, early in the morning, but without any kind of notice. We didn't know, and I thought they were supposed to let the city know if they weren't going to make it, so y'all could put out a blast and those of us that wanted to pull our trash in could. So I agree with all the kudos that have been given in that I can't believe what they pick up. I have seen dressers outside on people's, you know, at the end of their driveway to be picked up, and I thought, I can't believe they're putting that out for trash. So I am amazed at what they pick up. I'm very pleased that we get twice a month. I think it's a reasonable fee, and I think that, you know, the recycling is great, too. So I would have no problems except for that Wednesday pickup, and it seemed like it was ignored. It wasn't addressed for a long time. So I would, I have no problem supporting, you know, the re-upping of this contract, but I do want that addressed in the negotiations with Waste Connections on that. So I think that has to be done. And John is my neighbor, so he can second.
I don't have any problem. I'm very satisfied with the services, and there's a phenomenon that my wife calls gleaming. We'll put out whatever it is that we don't use anymore, and it gets picked up way before the trash people come. And they're looking for old desks, and they made out of wood.
Yes.
You put it out, it disappears before the trash people ever get there.
Yes, which is appreciated as well.
I'm happy with it.
I saw you moving the dresser to Tricia's house.
That's what it was.
I got something else. Thank you. Is that what you need?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mo.
All right. Moving into item eight, it is now six oh seven PM, and I now call to order this public hearing regarding the city of Friendswood proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2025, 2026. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views on the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Everyone desiring to be a part of this hearing should have completed the public hearing comment card in the foyer and submitted it to the city secretary. At the podium, each participant should give his/her name and address in order to provide a proper record for this hearing. Rules allow each person five minutes to present information. However, I encourage everyone to be as brief and to the point as possible. I'd now like to request that staff summarize the subject of this public hearing. Rhonda Blaskis, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And as you will recall, at the August fourth council meeting, you proposed a tax rate of fifty-two point six seven four six cents. Subsequent to that time, staff went back to work to lower that rate, and the budget that was adopted on August twenty-fifth, we used a tax rate of fifty-one point four one seven two cents. And with that tax rate, that gives us in the general fund about twenty-two point eight million dollars, and then the tax debt service about six point five million for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, anyone out there that didn't get a chance to fill out a card? I don't have any cards. So if there's someone that wants to fill one out real quick. All right, there being no one desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing regarding city of Friendswood proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and I move to item eight B, consider an ordinance for first and final reading, adopting and levying the ad valorem tax rate for maintenance and operation expenditures for the city of Friendswood's fiscal year commencing October first, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and adopting and levying the ad valorem tax rate for debt service for the city of Friendswood's fiscal year commencing October first, twenty twenty-five, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. I have to remind all council that this item requires a record vote, and a supermajority of five members of the city council vote in favor of the proposed ordinance in order to adopt the proposed tax rate. Additionally, the form of the motion must be made with the language that has been placed on the dais. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Well, I want to begin by thanking Rhonda and the city staff for putting together the hard work they did to get it to a lower rate. And with that, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point one four one seven two, which is effectively a two point six percent increase in the tax rate, and the proposed ordinance adopting such tax rate be approved, which rates consist of zero point three nine nine seven four nine for maintenance and operations, and zero point one one four four two three for debt service.
Your microphone didn't pick up the five at the beginning of that first number.
I see, I see Rhonda and Katina going, we need a correction.
I thought I said it, but if I didn't, the rate of zero point five one four one seven two.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Six to nothing, motion passes. Thank you very much. And Rhonda, Andrea, Jennifer, everybody, you guys. Katina, I know you're pitching in as well. Everybody fantastic. You guys, you saw the looks on our faces when you presented us with a, just a slight tax rate from last year, and you went back and sharpened your pencils somehow and made the magic happen and came back with the same tax rate as last year, which is phenomenal in my mind. So I just remind all residents that your tax rate is exactly the same as last year from the city. So if your taxes go up, you're either not sixty-five or your appraisal went up, and we are not in charge of appraisals. All right, item nine, city managers' report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. A few items to report. First off, our deputy city manager, Stephen Ray, and our community development director, Aubrey Harbin, recently participated in a Bay Area Commercial Real Estate Network background, I believe that's how they pronounce it luncheon, in which they talked about economic development, FDEDC, CEDC, our tax increment reinvestment zones, and opportunities that are coming and ongoing here in Friendswood. Obviously, you know firsthand that there's a lot going on in the community, but it's always nice to get out into these regional events to speak as to what's going on in Friendswood. It encourages more investments in our community, so thank you to both Stephen and Aubrey for presenting at that event. The second item, want to recognize our director of engineering, Hill Arius, was recently a speaker at the Texas Flood Plane Management Association Technical Conference. He, along with half associates, gave a presentation on our current master drainage plan and the efforts therein to update the plan for the city of Friendswood. As you can tell, he's an authority in the area, but it's always nice to see him be an authority in the area across the state, so thank you, Hill, for giving that presentation. Since I'm recognizing people, I want to recognize our GIS manager, Diana Lopez, who put together the robust survey system that we were able to complete recently on the garbage and recycling. It's not as simple as sending out postcards and trying to tabulate the responses. This was both the work of the GIS database that's tied back to it to ensure unique responses, as well as the AI evaluation of it by both GIS and the city secretary's office, so thank you to Diana and Dee on that. That, I'm sorry, and I missed the biggest part of that, was recognizing the fact that it was such a neat product that they had developed, that it was recognized at the Esri Micro Region Event, so she went and presented to Esri, which is the software provider for GIS. So thank you, Diana. Next up, I want to recognize Deputy Director of HR, Chaney Honeycutt, recently received a grant to pursue her senior credential professional, senior certified professional credentials for HR. We appreciate all of our staff continuing their, continuing their professional development, and it always helps, though, to get scholarships to make that happen, so thank you to Chaney for securing that scholarship. As you know, October's coming up. It's just around the corner. It's National Night Out. It will be on Tuesday, October seventh. It is a Tuesday, isn't it? Okay, Tuesday, October seventh. We recently put out sign-ups, and they're open for neighbors to register to sign up for having either PD, Fire Marshal, Fire Department, EMS, communications come to your event. If you want all of them to come out, they will make every effort to have multiple individuals available to come out to your community and let the kids play with the sirens and talk to you about the importance of our first responders and options to stay alert and to stay connected with our community. It's also a good opportunity to meet your neighbors, so I encourage folks to participate. Second to last, I want to remind council that we're about to undergo renovations to this council chambers. One, to do a little bit of a facelift, but more importantly, to improve the technology within this room, so that our microphones and our audiovisual stuff work far better. But because of that, you're going to be displaced for the next three months, that the city council will be meeting at the FISD boardroom in October, November, and December. Other boards and committees will be meeting at various city facilities throughout the community, either here at city hall or at the library, et cetera. Lastly, I didn't have it on our city manager's report, but there is an item on our consent agenda, accepting or awarding a contract for playground equipment at Centennial Park. This playground equipment could not be made possible without the contributions of HTX. I believe Randy Evans with HTX is in the audience. Over there, thank you, Randy. Did you bring the sixty thousand with you, or? Oh, wow, okay, yeah. No, but we appreciate the partnership with that youth sports group out there. Obviously, these parks are intended to benefit the community, and it's always nice when youth sports groups step up to help us, so thank you to HTX. Thank you, Randy. That's it.
Great job. Congratulations, Stephen, Hill, Aubrey, Diana. I noticed they didn't have a picture of you, Diana.
She's been recognized several times in the last several months, so I thought you just wanted to see the GIS stuff.
Very cool. Awesome. Great job.
Stephen, y'all looked all dressed up and everything. Y'all look nice.
Yeah. You can dress up, apparently. Okay. All right, item ten, business items. Ten A, consider naming a memorial bench to be placed at Friendswood Veterans Memorial in honor of former police chief Robert Bob Wieners, and authorizing the purchase and installation of such memorial. Rod, you got some details?
Yes, sir. As you all know, Chief Wieners was an instrumental part of this community in making the police department what it is today for the better part of twenty-five, twenty-six years. Coming off the heels of his twenty-three-year service to our country and the United States Marine Corps. Bob passed away a little over a year ago, and I don't know of anything that's fitting to encapsulate everything he's done for our community, but staff felt with, as well as the police department, that some sort of recognition at the Veterans Memorial would be appropriate. So we are working with the builders of the Veteran Memorial to do something that's tasteful, that honors both chief and his service to our community and our country, as well as respectful to those that donated that memorial that's right here next to city hall.
Discussion.
I was just wondering if we could do some more than just the, than just the bench.
Bench.
And I don't know, I've talked with a couple of other members, but I've even thought maybe naming the Emergency Operations Center after him, because he, that Emergency Operations Center would not even be what it is today without what he has done and has done. But some have talked about doing a bust. I'm just, I'm wondering if, I'm a hundred and ten percent behind this and even more, if we could come up with something even more. I know that he would want it to be simple, you know, chief, but if we could do it a little more or something, I'd be all in for that, too.
There is a badge, and that's putting it lightly, being donated to the Public Safety Building in honor of Chief Wieners as well, by former mayors, to recognize him. And as you all know, for any of you that knew Bob very well, he would hate every bit of this, so.
Completely. Completely.
Yeah.
Well, there's, you know, nothing that says we can't name something else, you know, and to follow our rules. We should put this on our action to discuss at our next retreat and kick it back and not give us time to think about it. Are you making the motion on this?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor. All right. Moving forward. Thank you. 10B, consider authorizing the formation of a 32 plus or minus member 2026 bond election ad hoc committee and confirming the appointments thereto. Got a slide on this?
Uh, there is, well, there's a few slides, I believe, in the backup material on this. So as in, in keeping with our tradition in years past, in 2013, again in 2019, the, the city is putting together a bond advisory group, a group of citizens across the community that will provide some sort of feedback to the community after evaluating our needs for the city, after going through Finance 101 class with the city, after going, meeting with each department to see what needs are out there, both in terms of our medium and long range plans. In keeping with that same mindset, the, the group will be broken up into five distinct areas, facilities, parks, drainage, streets, finance. I know it's shown on there that there's 32 members. There are additional three, potentially four members that will be appointed next month. I am not singling out Councilmember Hanks, but unfortunately, she missed a couple of meetings over the summer due to a variety of reasons and wasn't able to get some names to us. So that's why there may be more members to be appointed next month. The, the five project subcommittees will be facilities, parks, drainage, streets, and finance. After they go through all of our needs and present something to, to city council, obviously, y'all will be the final authority to determine what goes on the ballot and what does not go on the ballot. Councilmember Hanks has been asked to serve as a liaison to that by Mayor Foreman. The meetings will start, it says September 2025, but realistically won't start till October. And then we'll go all the way through the month of March, in which case they will present to city council in April, and we'll spend the better part of May and the summer putting together the, the bond program if an election is called for November 2026. Next slide, please. The criteria considered for the bonds advisory committees, they obviously have to be Friendswood residents, have experience volunteering or serving the community in some facet over the last several years, completed. The Friendswood Academy was one of the pluses, folks that have taken the time to get to know a little bit more about Friendswood. And we wanted a diverse group, both on education, age, gender, profession, as well as extracurricular activity. You can't tell by the map, but there are dots on that map representing the location of each of those, those committee members, and it is very well represented across the entire community, both in the Harris County side as well as the Galveston County side of Friendswood. Those are their names. It's in your backup material if you have any, you have any questions. And I believe that was the last, actually, there's one more slide that talks about the, the timeline associated with this. But in a nutshell, we're looking to get a, a recommendation to city council in March of 2026, with an election being called shortly thereafter over the summer for November.
Sounds good. I, I appointed Trish as a liaison because she's done a lot of bond committees in her past life. And I know we, we've all been somewhat involved. Sally's been involved before in bond committee stuff, but I thought Trish would be a good representative from council to serve with them and guide them. I'm really heartened to see all the young people on that list, you know. I don't know every name on that list, but there's a few of them on there I know that are my kids' age. So that, that means they're young in my mind.
As you noted earlier, if you're above 65, you're not impacted by tax increases. So it's better to get the young people involved.
Randy Haley, you shrugged your shoulder. You're not over 65?
I'm sorry, I wouldn't.
I'm gonna put you down as a yes. Okay. All right. Let's see. I need, what do I need here? I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor. Six to nothing, motion passes. Item 11, consider on second and final reading an ordinance approving the 2025 annual update to the service and assessment plan and the assessment role for the Friendswood City Center Public Improvement District, including the collection of annual installments. This is the second reading of this ordinance. Does council have any questions, comments, or further discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor. 11B, consider on second and final reading an ordinance annexing property owned by the City of Friendswood in accordance with that boundary agreement with the City of League City executed on May 6, 2025. Said property being approximately 1.3347 acres, out of lots 159, 160, and 170. Sloan subdivision, according to the plat thereof, as filed in volume 254, page 53 and 54, Galveston County map records. This is the second reading of this ordinance. Does the council have any questions, comments, or further discussion? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor. Six to nothing. 11C, consider on second and final reading an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration, Article 1, Generally, Section 2-23 Procedure and Administration, subsection A, Rules of Procedure, and Article 2 Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Division 6, Fourth of July Steering Committee, Section 2-51 Created Membership, subsection B, Membership, and Division 8, Keep Friendswood Beautiful Committee, Section 2-61 Created Membership, subchapter B, Membership of the Friendswood City Code, to remove residency and business ownership as qualifications for membership. Second reading of this. Does anybody have any?
Yes, I do, actually.
Go ahead, Joe.
For those of you that didn't make the first reading of this, I voted no to this ordinance change. The motion passed, and this is the second reading. I'm going to vote no again tonight. But I at least wanted to explain that I do absolutely support opening up our boards and committees to those that are not residents of Friendswood, or at least certain boards and commissions. But I thought there was a, a better solution and a better option, and that's why I'm voting no.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor. Opposed. Five to one. All right. 11D, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year 2024-2025 by approving Budget Amendment 12 and providing the supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds.
Motion. Go ahead. Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor. Motion passes. 11E, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a finance contract with Government Capital Corporation for the financing of technology and various equipment, including but not limited to generators and associated equipment, emergency equipment, and ambulance chassis and refit. Rod, got details on what you're going to do with this?
Yes, sir. So last month, you approved a capital financing agreement for the engine, the fire engine that's in production, that's actually already built, but we're looking to outfit it for delivery next year. This is for the remainder of those items that are part of the budget. So a new generator, the Public Safety Building, some technology, ambulance chassis refit. So rather than incur all the cost in one fiscal year, it's spread out over the five years.
So, Mo, I visited with Lisa a little bit earlier, and, and she clarified some things for me. But the ambulance chassis, how much is that? And I know it's for the big fit. It's for the big ambulance boxes. How much is the chassis?
I believe half a million dollars, if, right around there. A little, sorry, 250, 250. Sorry, the new ambulance is half a million.
Yeah, we can get that. But just, I would like for us to consider, I know we're going to have four of the big chassis, 450s. And they take three FTEs, so full-time employees. I'd like for us to consider the ambulatory vans instead of the big chassis. And, and Lisa can speak to it because she, she was very, very, very good with me just now. But they're about $180,000. And you save on FTE because they're only manned by two. And my thought is, is our dispatchers are really good. And if we have a situation where we have a fall at the village on the park, we have a broken arm over at the elementary school, and our dispatchers are hearing that, they don't have to send one of those full cardiovascular type vans that has the capability and medical capability of an ER virtually. They could just send an, a two-man ambulatory van, and just the chassis, $500 bucks, $500,000. We could almost buy three ambulatory vans, and we would cover a lot more area, in my thinking, and save the taxpayers money. But I was very clear, I understand what Lisa's saying. You, you don't know what that situation may be once you get there. Okay, I understand that. But I just think it's something we should think about. I'm in favor of, of this. I think we need four full cardiovascular ER type. But moving forward, and especially with the maintenance of the 450s, we should consider a cheaper alternative, but it still would give us coverage. And it, it could be sent to where we have pickups or something like that versus our, our full staffed way-to-go ambulances. And I love watching them out there in Friendswood. Don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here to everybody, and I know I mentioned it about two years ago, that we could do, we could do as much coverage and do it maybe cheaper. So that's my only consideration on this whole thing and discussion. I'm in favor of, of this E. But that's what my thoughts are. And I would like all of us to discuss that.
And we can discuss it at an upcoming workshop or retreat. I will mention, we do have the supervisor vehicle that's not the ambulance is the response to a lot of these calls. And they can do initial triage, for lack of a better term, to determine if we need a full rolling stock to respond to cars.
So what is that, that we can?
So we, we, it's an expedition, basically. So, so the supervisor on duty will respond to a call and make an initial assessment without having to roll that ambulance necessarily. Obviously, that supervisor's going to need some assistance if they're offering a lift.
Yeah, and that's not always the case either.
Correct.
I think those supervisor vehicles are the fastest cars in Friendswood. Wouldn't you say, chief? Ever seen one of those go by in a blur? Any ambulance supervisors?
Way too often, for sure.
Oh, yeah, man. I mean, there's, those things are race cars. They, they get out and hurt.
But they're responding to an emergency, so they need to go to.
I'm saying, if you want to be a fast driver, be an ambulance supervisor.
But if it's at my house, I'm, go for it. Go as fast as you need to get to my house.
No, I'm not. I'm just saying. I, I, I'm for it. They're the fastest vehicles in town.
Fair comment, Councilmember Graffon. So we can have a workshop to discuss it a little bit more.
I appreciate Robert's comments, but I would like to hear from Lisa on some data, on how much they're responding and what they need and all of that. But I think it's a good point to, to think about in the future.
Yes, ma'am.
On that note, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor. Six to nothing. Okay. Item 12, consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor. There being no further items, this meeting is adjourned.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor.